This is Radio 93.16, 2024 is now in session. Please rise. I have allegiance different.
Of the United States of America. To the Republic, the people's heads on a mission on our government. It is available for literally and trust has to grow.
First, you've got what we have all the way.
Councilmember Johnson, here. That's the movie.
Yeah.
Maranti.
Here.
Nissan.
Here.
Boris.
Here.
Carnegie.
Here.
Howards.
Here.
Roni.
Here.
Summer. Bolo.
Here.
President TPH.
Here.
One question.
Okay. Can I have a motion to dispense with the minutes of March 10 meeting and place them on file? An introduction, please. A second. Uh, all those in favor, please sign by this saying hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion can. I have a communication and they asked for it to be delivered. I mean, to be read. Uh, and I will because it relates to, uh, the presentation we'll be hearing soon. The logic there. You may not know that there were actually two original projects that we were going to consider for the restore grant. But one of them withdrew their application. It's from, um, Taylor, uh, Delarde Perez. I'm writing to let you know that after much thought, we've decided no longer pursue the restored New York funding for this round. Competing with the Hudson Housing Authority's Bliss Towers project feels spiritually and culturally misaligned with our core values. Our hope is that by pulling out, this important project may have increased visibility and more opportunity to advance in the restored funding process. While we are very excited to bring our project to life in our beloved city, we are more concerned at the state of affordable housing in our community. The lack is great, the need is huge. As such, we want to support any movement or development of projects that align with the mission to bring back affordable housing to the local community. We are grateful to you for your time, metrics you shared with us as we navigated this application process. And hope to live in my partner again in the future, please keep us in mind. So can I have a introduction and a second to receive this communication? You can use. Rodney and Jennifer. All those in favor, please indicate by saying hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion can. Bills, Michael, can you? Oh, there's a mission. Oh, sorry. Um, I'm out of work. Uh, man, the motion, a second to place committee reports on file. Margaret and Dewan. All those in favor, please signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion can. Now we look at the bills. Michael, can you post it, please? Questions? Councilmembers. Can I have an introduction and a second to pay the bills? Margaret, second. Comment? Any questions? Oh, call me, please. Crazy.
Councilmember Johnson. Hi. That's the movie.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Carnegie.
Gary. David.
Sorry, aye.
Howards.
Hi.
Roni.
Hi.
Star.
Hi.
Bolo.
Hi.
President TPH. Hi. Karen.
Can I add a question? Add a question. Yes. Is it okay if we assume that all these bills are every month are part of the budget already or outside of the budget?
Um, if they're out. Well, if they're outside of the budget, we can give the proof in first.
There goes the rest of the rhetoric. So all of these bills are by part of the budget.
Okay, moving right on. We're going to have a presentation of the one, um, restored grant applicant that we, uh, have in the works. We're not going to be voting on it tonight because we have. We originally thought you can have two applicants and we were going to have to choose. But we'll probably have a special meeting next week to actually vote on the restore to support the restored grant. So, um, Jeffrey Dotson and his, uh, gang are here to, uh, tell us about Hudson Housing Authority's law. Thank you. Do you all contribute? Jeffrey Dotson, can you introduce the right?
Hi, everyone. As you may know, Vonda, for some of you that don't know, Smith, I am the chairperson of the Hudson Housing Authority Board. Today I have here with me Jeffrey Dotson, which is our amazing executive director. We have from Mount Co construction and we have John and Mario and you think that.
Exactly.
Sam Buddha. And we're all here, ready to represent today. I'll start you off.
By the way, but she has a free conference. Would you rather have more questions at the end or do you want to take questions as we go along? Okay, so council members, I would say you can ask questions later. Thank you.
Okay. On behalf of the Hudson Housing Authority and the 105 low income households which we currently serve, we appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and to present our redevelopment plan to you. Before I ask our executive director Jeffrey Dotson to provide an overview of the project, I want you to know that for the last several years, which by the way, I've served on the Hudson Housing Authority Board for four years and I've been chairperson for three years. The Hudson Housing Authority has been working with HUD, New York State Homes and Community Renewal to put together a redevelopment plan to replace the obsolete Bliss Tower Columbia Apartments apartment project with modern, well-designed and affordable housing that is currently worthy of our community. We now have a plan to do just that and are very closely being able to bring the plan to fruition. We already have received initial hot comments and have a funding application in the New York State Homes and Community Renewal. Additional funding through the E S D is a critical part of that plan, so we are hopeful that the city will support our application this evening. Now I would love to be able to turn the floor over to Jeffrey Dotson, who will provide the city council with an overview of our plan and our application. Thank you all.
Thank you, Vonda. Um, so I'd like to add my thanks to the city council for considering the housing authority's application. And we'd also like to thank the mayor and his administration for the, uh, help that they've already given us and planning assistance that they've already provided. So our draft master plan is made up of two phases that proposes the replacement of Bliss Towers and Columbia Apartments apartments with a total of 300 units of affordable housing. This will include approximately 10 townhomes and city-owned sites, which the housing authorities under contract to acquire from the city. This will be a transformative project. You may ask how. So I want to tell you. The impact of this project it will have, it will ensure that the existing public housing residents do not lose housing because of obsolete building conditions. It will expand affordable housing in the community by more than doubling the number of affordable housing units from 135 to approximately 300 units. It will serve both very low income households, 100 units for extremely low income households at or below 30% of AMI. Ensuring the city's most vulnerable populations can truly reside in quality decent and affordable housing. We will be also be providing an income mix by providing housing for households with up to 80% of the median income. Present when lastly, we'll present the community with this is a sustainable project which achieves the highest levels of sustainability incorporating geothermal and solar for present for the preservation of the future. The increase in households will have a significantly beneficial impact on the community and the economy. It will deconcentrate poverty with the HHA community by integrating extremely low income affordable housing with affordable working family housing. The increase in households and integration of households at all levels of affordability will drive local and economic growth and provide meaningful opportunities for workforce housing. This affordable housing will provide housing for workforce to allow our businesses in Hudson to be able to hire and grow. The design of the project is also being carefully considered by architects. The design will mitigate the stigma of public housing and affordable housing by creating both a beautiful project integrated into the city's skyscape and replacing the existing longstanding nine-story tower surrounded by parking lots. The plan defined defines a green courtyard that is open to the public as a park similar in size to that of Public Square on, uh, Warren and Seventh Street. This design will improve the quality of life for, uh, of the residents and community as a whole. The buildings will be developed with visual interest to relate to the existing history and style of the city of Hudson. Each building is intentionally a different height to add a variety to the design, uh, yet related spatially to create a sense of community. The community will be able to walk through a beautiful pedestrian walkway rather than cars that cross an active stage street. The pedestrianization of stage street will also increase safety for residents through elimination of cars, decrease noise pollution from being an active thoroughfare, increase health in recreational areas by redirecting of traffic and discourage crime as residents and neighbors enjoy the property, there will be more eyes out on the street. Uh, so we'll increase the overall aesthetics of the city of Hudson by converting black asphalt into green space. So our application for the demolition of Bliss and Columbia connects to phase one of the plan. The redevelopment of Site B, which is our underutilized existing 1.4 acre site on the north end, which currently contains a basketball court, maintenance garage and parking. The acquisition and reconstruction of approximately 10 townhomes on city-owned land. Site B proposes to create a sable building with five stories on its east end and seven stories on its west end with 138 affordable housing units. Site B will have a total of approximately 186,000 residential gross square feet, including approximately 3500 square feet of community facility space for a social programming provider and approximately 30,000 square feet of subsurface and service parking, as well as green space and amenities, including a community room with kitchenette, computer room and bicycle storage. Once residents are relocated to Site B and the townhouses, Bliss and Columbia will be demolished. Phase two will complete the redevelopment and the new construction of two buildings with finishing the amenities spaces, including green spaces and the basketball court. Depending upon the turn again, and if you have any questions, you can enter them.
Okay, one more time. Move on. Good.
Yes, um, it looks, uh, I like the architectural elements that you mentioned. Uh, I love the backyard. Uh, I didn't think it's, uh, it's pleasing and, um, people can definitely be happy there. Um, my concern is funding. So if you can, please elaborate more about how would that happen?
We're sure.
Uh, Sophie's asking about the funding. So right now we have an application before the state of New York under the, their low income housing tax credit programs. Does it have a, they have two sources of funding there, we're going for the 4% loan of the housing tax credit program. Uh, that allows credits. I'm going to go too, too deep in the weeds, but just give you one thing. So they allow tax credits to come to investors. The investors actually won't use the project, um, but that alone cannot support the project. There's what we have, uh, called gap funding. So the gap funding comes in the form also from the state as subordinate funding. And from the state here are requested is for E S D to also be able to, uh, help with the funding. So this is an application to the state right now, which is why this is still a proposed plan. But we're hopeful to have these discussions with the state with this E S D funding also in our hand, uh, because it will make our fight more compelling.
Now, the only other thing that I would add is that this source of funding is typical for affordable housing developments throughout the state of New York. It's a typical program that's used. It's been used by other housing authorities as well. So, um, we know it's a, it's a good program. Um, and, uh, with this additional, uh, funding, if we can get the E S D package, it would be pretty much complete.
What is the timeframe of the, uh, funding? Like when shall we expect to know, uh, what we?
The funding or the project?
The funding.
So the state's 4% tax credit program is not on a strict deadline. So it's a conversation based like open, open funding availability. Uh, whether they have credits, for example, available this year, uh, we just won't know yet until the discussions happen. And ultimately they'll let us know and their timing will drive the timing of this project.
Okay.
So the, so the process is we have the application in, waiting for the state to get back to us. We'll have a conversation and that's when they'll give us some ideas to when. We, we believe that this is going to get funded. The state has been very supportive. Um, the state has set representatives, uh, here, uh, to meet with us, uh, to meet with the mayor and his staff. And, um, we believe we'll get funded, but it depends on what their other funding requests are. So we won't know probably until we have that meeting. But realistically, um, we probably will not be able to get it funded and close. You get the financing coming in until after the end of this year. Usually takes that at long.
Thanks, Secretary Johnson. Um, Margaret.
Yeah, so in your description of the two phases, uh, in the first phase, you would be moving the current residents of Bliss Tower.
Yes.
Uh, into, you've got 10 town, townhouses, 148 units in another building. And then phase two would be two separate buildings, correct?
Right.
Right, so you've described a population.
Yeah, true.
You described a population of very low income and then, um, uh, working, uh, affordable house, right? Um, this sounds like the very low income people are going to be concentrated in one building and the working force people are going to be in the other two buildings. Is that correct?
So I'd love to respond to that because that is a very specific, um, factor that we wanted to be mindful because you don't want that to happen.
No, you do not.
Exactly. You want the integration of, and it comes from the building to be successful. So naturally, because we need to relocate what is currently an extremely low income population, right? That's the most important thing. Uh, it will naturally have the, um, layout of like the first building being more concentrated at the lower income levels. Because we're bringing over ways of 100 households, like round numbers, 100 households into the first building out of 140 total. So it will naturally be like two thirds of, uh, 30% of income and below. But what makes the difference for the future is how you regulate that. So for example, we will regulate however, like we all, you know, decide, we'll, we'll decide to, uh, we'll defer to the, the city and to HHA and the community. But if we, for example, specifically regulated only a third of those at 30, when those other 30% households vacate, those units will be restricted at, for example, 40% and 50% and 60% and 80%. So yes, like the.
So the buildings in phase two will eventually have lower income people.
Yeah, it will also be exactly that, like restricted to, you know, 40% at 30 and 20% at 40 and 20% at 50 and 80. Yeah.
So the, the other question I have, um, relates to the number of units that you're building here. Um, this town is very small and has very, very limited employment. Um, we do not have public transportation, to speak of. And I would be concerned about that number of people being brought, like, obviously the folks currently living in Bliss Tower's phase one has to happen. There's no question about that. But I'd be concerned about bringing in that number of people to a place that simply doesn't have, um, employed opportunities. Uh, what, where are they going to find jobs?
So we had, and I know all defer to the, the city, but we have to market side that, that shows like in city and like the city, I know it's only 6,000 people, so it's not like the, uh, central. But in the city of Hudson and the media, um, primary market area, you do have much more demand for affordable housing than the city is able to meet at every affordable level.
Well, there's demand for affordable housing. What I'm saying is the concentration of this number of units in an area without public transportation that also has very, very few job opportunities. I, I would be concerned about that.
There, there's the next.
Yeah, um, so right now our hospital currently has over 230 open positions. Our school district is also hiring at a large rate. Um, there also is a lot of restaurants and bars that are hiring that can't keep staff because they can't afford to work in those restaurants and live in Hudson with the increasing, uh, crisis. So there are job opportunities that are here, um, that just you can't work at those jobs and live here.
And the same for the county as well. There's a ton of vacant, like you can go on their site, there's a ton of vacant county job opportunities as well, so.
So my last question relates to, uh, state street pedestrianization of State Street. Where do you intend to redirect the traffic?
You want to show me. Didn't you?
Yeah.
I think you had that in that.
Uh, so this, this right here, um, I don't know if you can see between the marketing spaces. It's going to be a newly, and I'm sorry, we, we will say that this was just a plan. This gave us a great opportunity to come here to kind of introduce you to this. So apologies that coming to you kind of, um, more abruptly introduced than like us coming here to introduce them. But it was a great opportunity. At some point we will come to you to present on our core request to pedestrianize State Street. So please don't.
With full architectural, so you can get us.
Yeah. No, I'm just curious as to.
It's going to be an extension.
It's going to be on State Street.
Well, we're showing the first street will be extended into State. So it's going to be.
So we're, we're going to cut this into like a, a right angle here.
The first street?
Well, first and State are perfect.
Does, uh, I mean, um, essentially most of the traffic will overflow into Columbia.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Which already is very congested.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the pedestrianization is best organization is an amazing idea, but we will have to look into.
Well, we have to figure out where they're going to go. Are you thinking of just a stretch of State Street?
Uh, yeah, just.
Just one block.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Rich, are you ready for?
Yes.
I'm done.
Thank you, Ricky. Um, is there retail stores on the ground level or something in the plan?
Not, not bad.
No, we don't. We looked into it or architect looked into it. We didn't see the, the value of that. We don't want to take anything away from the existing commercial that's here. Um, so we don't, we have some community space that we can use and provide community services out of the first floor space.
Okay, and then, um, you said there's different income levels in the, but are the apartments all the same more or less with different income levels?
Yeah, there's going to be a mix of apartments, uh, in terms of size, one bedroom, that type of thing. But in terms of, um, the standard finishes and things like that, yes, everybody is going to get the same.
So if anyone comply for any apartment?
Yes.
Got it.
And.
Household size, right?
Right.
Um, and to answer, I think your question was to be mindful of the fact that, you know, stories in the, in New York City, for example, that we heard that like the back units with like no views are assigned to someone. They're not assigned unit the way the state does it. It's, um, like regulation by unit type and, um,
In the.
And yeah, and the AMI. So whenever like there's a vacancy, they'll know like, oh, we need a 40% build and that person will come in.
Right.
So it's not a fixed unit.
Right, so one apartment is a, a specific AMI.
Exactly. Yeah.
Aaron Johnson.
When, when is the rejected time of this hall, uh, debuting?
Well, we'd like to, we'd like to start construction early next year. If we can get on the state's schedule, okay? The first building is going to take a year and a half or so to build. We're going to relocate people and then we're going to demolish. So we're talking probably a three or four year process by the time you're done done. Um, some, the one thing that we haven't talked about too much is that there are a couple of small sites where we're going to try to build townhouses. Okay, these are city-owned sites that housing authorities under contract purchase those. And, uh, they can, uh, they can be used as a relocation resource for some of the larger families that are currently in bliss now. And that, that we can do as part of the first phase.
Governor. Is there any, um, two questions. Is there any going to be senior housing areas designated for senior housing? Um, also, um, it's during your, your relocation, uh, the ones that are first going to be in the first option, you're going to get a choice to go to the second option when they become available. And they're going to have, uh, first preference to, to go to the second option?
Uh, and good questions again. Right now there's no designation for specific senior buildings. Okay, that's something that we could look into. Uh, it becomes very difficult. Um, the second phase theoretically, you could make one of the building senior. Okay, if there's a housing authority and the, uh, village thought that the city thought that this was something you could do. You physically could do that. So I would say right now there's no designation, but that's something we can look into if, if people think that's the right thing to do. And then the second question, I'm sorry, was, uh.
Who people have the option of?
Oh, the, the, I would go to. Again, we haven't finalized the relocation plan, but that's something that we've done in other projects. And, and that's something that the housing authority, uh, wants us to do. We can build that in.
But the truth is they're not going to be different. A apartment is going to be different then, so they're probably going to be happy with their space. Nobody likes to move.
And that's again.
Yeah.
People don't like to move twice.
That exactly is the concern about having a preponderance of very low income people in the first building in phase one. And yes, people don't really want to move. Uh, so I think it's going to be kind of difficult to have the kind of mixed income housing in phase two that you're talking about because the low income people are going to be, uh, relocated during phase one.
But it's not the majority of the, well, it's only a, a lot of 100 residents right now. So we're not using the, it's 148 units. So there will be empty center.
But the, the phase one, phase one is 148, right?
We also have a waiting list.
But phase one is 148.
Except 48 of those, they're only.
We only have 100 occupants right now.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, all the total apartment.
Yeah.
We only have 100, I can buy rooms right now. The list is not.
And then some of those are going to go to the townhouses, so you, you reduce that number even more.
Right. Jennifer?
Um, is Providence Hall part of?
I think it's not, and I was going to say that is. That is a certain building that's across the street. So we have to determine that there's going to be a need for senior housing because we do have that across the street. But they have waiting list too for senior housing. Right. So, but we, it's something we'll look at. We'll spend. Councilmembers? Yeah. Yeah. So what is the process now at this point? And, um, like what are the hurdles that oops, I have to go to room one, this is actually going to fund it. After you vote to give us the money?
So there, there are a number of milestones. The first one starts with discussions with the state on whether they're okay with you guys too, by the way. But, you know, as the financing folks, whether they're okay with the, uh, dollars that would and could be committed to, to the plan. And so right now we're having this discussion. We're in the, you know, like we've submitted our application, they're reviewing it. We've had this dialogue with them. Um, the project does from a financing perspective have a substantial gap. I mean, we are planning on geothermal, um, all bells and whistles for sustainability, subsurface parking, right? We need to bury the parking somewhere, um, subsurface parking. So it's, it's going to be a very expensive project. And so we need to make sure they're okay with it as proposed.
Yeah, that's what I was curious about because I, I, I was looking at the numbers and I, I know how much things cost me husband's builder. And I, I was like, wow, this is a lot of money. And now that you say so, for the parking, I'm, I'm like, oh, I get it.
Um, the, the solar, would that be on site solar or would that be somewhere? Yeah, I mean, I think right now the plan is, is like the flat roof for the solar and a rating on it. So, yeah, so we'll be announcing our own. I, I don't know how they do it with the, you know, the credits you're building from the utility company service, but yes.
Are you planning to revise the plans if you don't get the funding?
That's exactly what, what would have to happen, yeah.
And that's in discussion with the state. The state is going to come back to us and it, the state is going to look at our project and our costs versus all the other projects and all the other costs just to make sure that, you know, they're not overfunding because state's pretty tight with their money on the housing side because they're trying to get as much affordable housing as possible. But that, to go back to two questions about the process, so, so yes, we start with the state, we have a discussion. They give what we call the green light, okay? Then we go into full architecturals, okay? That'll take months in design. We'll be back and talk with you and the housing authority. We've been meeting with residents on a regular basis. We meet with the residents every two months, um, to keep them informed about what's going on. That planning process is going to take, you know, close to a year, okay? If not a little bit more, uh, before that's completed. Uh, and that's before we even, uh, get the final approval and have the construction on closing and then start, uh, start the construction on phase one.
Um, these images that you have here, is it possible to get electronic versions of those? Um these images that you have here, is it possible to get electronic versions of those? And in the, on the one here on the left, could you just point out where phase one is and phase two?
Sure, so here, this is basically where Bliss is now and and Columbia will be here. So this is across the street, which is, when you look at it, you'd see uh the basketball court, you're smoking, the gazebo. That's this area here, the maintenance shed, yep, the maintenance shed, all that areas, the idea is that's vacant, we can go, we can build there first.
So that was the phase one? And then everything else is phase two?
And and then this, the Bliss and Columbia will stay until we remove people. And we've been doing the townhouses at this.
And where are the townhouses?
Townhouses, there are a couple of different sites and we're still doing some of the uh architectural and design work. But one is on the corner here between uh Columbia and second, uh there's another site here uh on State Street. Um two sites here on State Street, where we think we can get townhouses, probably a total of about thirteen or so townhouses.
And then if if you would just. Can you just show me again the stretch of state that would be pedestrianized?
Between Bliss now and the parking lot.
Yes, um so what we've been moving on is the ideal project, but like you said, there's a there's a funding, there's a gap. So if the if you don't uh get the full funding that you're expecting, right? Does that project then get re-sculpted and then we come back here, or how does that work?
As we as we go forward with the state, the state's gonna look at this, one of the things that they may say is, you know what, we don't have enough money. To fund all three hundred units, okay, so see what you can do, come back with a redesign and do two hundred and fifty units or two hundred and eighty units. And obviously, we have to come back uh and the state, we have to agree that, but that's a that's a typical exercise.
One, I'm clear, we're voting to support and restore.
What you said, would it be a parking complex, I mean, a a a parking in inside parking lot? Cause I think using the state, that's usually a state known of too, right, they don't really fund parking.
No, they do, they do fund it, but the problem is that it's a cost, it's a it's a big cost, particularly if you go under a building. But one of the things in working with the housing authority and with the state uh and and with the tenants, that there is um. Parking is a real concern. And so we don't wanna park everything on the street, we wanna try to get some under the building, it's a it's a cost.
So this has actually a great diagram here of the the parking, so the architects have actually noticed that because of like a drop of the the geography here naturally. They can actually make an entrance to subsurface parking on one side, it kind of like leads a really nice layout naturally, so.
A nice flow.
Yeah, a nice flow, this is just the first floor proposal right now, um you know, just the government, it's not that interesting. But it it's interesting to see because of all the amenities that the residents will be provided in this draft compared to what they have now. Um and and highlights really like the parking, but.
I guess my question, if the project is re-sculpted, it doesn't come back to us for any sub- like. Might for other reasons, but not for others, right?
Um I guess this might be further bond and possibly the mayor, is there, have you guys already explored um any? Options to try to prioritize some of the new housing units for people that may have been displaced recently in the last whatever. Years from Hudson, like maybe not all of the units, but a certain percentage for people that have been recently displaced because of the housing.
And I'll say this, our waiting list is open, and they can apply, and then they're not, we're not actually moving people on, that they can get on the waiting list now?
Right, I think it's like if there's a quota for them, like specifically set up, to prioritize maybe if there's like a point system. We don't currently have a quota, but we can absolutely look into it, sure, that's something that the board and the mayor as well, we have always discussed for sure.
I don't, when you use tax monies, it's a lottery system. They don't, they don't use some, you you can apply, but it's a lottery system, with the Greenport uh Garden Apartments, with, it was a lottery system. So they don't prioritize, it's a lottery system. But choosing tax money.
Uh so so it is a lottery based system, but you can still have kind of preferences, and so did something like um. Most federal money has like a federal disaster displacement, you know, but similar idea, that's for uh disaster recovery displacement. Um provision in there, so you're required to take someone who, you know, was displaced because of some human disaster, um those qualifications. So it's similar to that, uh and you have your other preferences that BJJ has, they can build in.
And it's basically a plan you present to the state and you let them know what your priorities are, and they and they will do that.
Yes, how many one bedroom and two bedroom apartments you're gonna have, and how many parking spots are there?
These are proposed, um the state could say something as simple as we need more one bedroom units and then the whole thing gets revamped. Of course, like with the, you know, permission of the state in the city, but uh they're very much gonna drive it right now. It's very heavily on two bedrooms and three bedrooms, looking to start like working families here in the city. Um and we do obviously, you know, fifty percent of it will still be one bedrooms as well, we don't have any studio unit, just a side flag.
When we when we get few of these uh in electronic form, there's gonna be the number of units, one bedroom, we have three bedroom, money cheap. And we'll get you the parking spaces as well.
Okay, another cap, that's the numbers. Okay, can I just say before, no, I just wanna thank you, I just wanna say thank you guys, but thank you to the project that withdrew. It just that they saw the need and, you know, um support us and everything, so we really appreciate it. Since we aren't voting on, tonight, we're gonna have a special meeting next Wednesday at six P M. To vote on this resolution to work the restoring grant. We can't vote on this today?
But what day is uh?
I'm sorry.
What day is that meeting?
Okay, uh Lloyd?
Were there any basketball reunions, are there any? Were there any basketball reunions, if there's one on? Hundred and forty eight, so then you're gonna be three hundreds or two hundred and fifty, that's a hundred and fifty, what's the waiting list look like?
I think twenty three.
Twenty three? So that's like that's like hundred and twenty five or something like that, you ready?
All the um housing complexes all have waiting lists.
There's only twenty three?
No, we're talking about other other places.
Oh, the Hudson, yeah, okay.
I remind the council, received a study, oh, thank you, by the way, Gary, you received this uh a study.
This is the nicest game.
Uh you received a uh email from Sashel all about the status of Hudson, you can see this.
Which was great.
I'd say thank you. Uh yeah.
It was really good.
You received that, as well, Michael uh Gerselko sent us an email. So really, those two documents, those two emails, are really sort of an answer to Gary's question a couple of weeks ago, to me. Like what's in the pipeline, the notes of the two most important, among others, there are other things that are still going on. Uh Thursday night, we're gonna um have the first meeting of the sidewalk commission, whatever we're calling it, but um. And that'll sort of kick off soon too, uh I know that uh for Gary's benefit, the um. D R I projects are all uh moving uh well ahead, um. One of our resolutions tonight relates to Fegari, the sort of, the sort of uh redheaded child of the old D R I. No, that's not a good thing.
Not if you're running the chat, yeah.
The forgotten child, uh the other D R I process, that's that's moving ahead, as you know, Dunn's moving ahead. And connectivity is out to um bit.
Speaking of the D R I. Could we get a summary of, you know, where everything is in process and also? No, I want it written and I want pictures. Sorry.
Well, I don't know what to tell you, but um you can do it on your own.
Um I can't because I don't have the information specifics.
I'm not sure what it is you're looking for. I mean, did I just, but there the the proposal for Dunn is on the website. The proposal for connectivity is on the website. Uh Fegari is.
Has changed.
Has changed.
Are we gonna have a public input for that? For the labor.
Yeah, well, first we gotta get this report that is on our agenda timing for uh support.
Are there, are there? Are there drawings for any ideas around that?
For Fegari?
Uh no, no.
That's what, that's what.
That's what, that's what we're trying to find, this resolution tonight, yeah.
When you say connectivity, what do you think?
Attached to the Fegari, it really wouldn't cover much.
Yeah, it's only like a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, there are so many wonderful craftspeople in this town that I. I think you could find volunteers that would help to rebuild or.
Or legal. I mean, that's been proposed.
They if they have a.
To do what exactly?
To help preserve one of these buildings and then put in all of the the historical.
Well, that's a good fine idea, and I encourage you to, you know, maybe just.
I could maybe make that up.
That'd be great.
Yes, the connectivity, that was for complete streets? So hasn't that also changed, because part of the complete streets was the um just state street?
Well, yeah, as over time, you have to.
It was gonna be a like a combined walk-in, now it now it's.
No, that's not part of the project anymore.
Okay, good.
Cause we have to condense and condense, because it's just not that, relatively speaking, I mean, you arrive, it's up to four million dollars. But um four million dollars to, you know, completely revamp the streets, it just doesn't go that far. Unfortunately. Any other questions about the D R I? Um okay, let's move on then. And right, I thought it was all the project proposals are on are on our website, right?
Yeah, aside from our revision to the Fergory, yes, but that's partially why we have this resolution.
I I think what what Jenny's really talking about, yes, we have proposals, but it would be nice to get. To have formal written updates on the status of the projects, what has occurred in the last quarter or in the last month. I think one of the things we talked about was having reports of that kind coming to finance. Sorry, one of the things we talked about in finance was that that might be a good location to have. Updates on some of these major projects, where they stand, what's going on, and so it's it's not about. Having a conversation and just orally hearing, oh, everything's moving along, it's about actually having project plan and.
Um I I'll make one suggestion, uh we are and about to submit a revi- a revision to our extension request. On the D R I itself, so we can provide that to the council, and that does have a breakdown of everything that's happened so far. And the plan moving forward, so that I can provide that to you tomorrow.
There's one raised, can I remember?
Uh yes, that's one company, so.
Okay, now um.
Yeah, yeah, real quick, Mike, cause you said, entered a revision, uh so. I mean, obviously, do you know any D R Is, I think, cause there's so many that haven't been completed, do you know any that's actually? Cause we're late in the game anyway. The ones before us, D R Is before us. So we're not alone in the how long it is taking to complete our D R Is, or I know of other D R Is that have been awarded before us. That haven't even started, right?
Most of the, you know, it's rare that there's a D R I.
It's a very difficult program to administer, and it takes a long time for reimbursements to be paid. So that causes a huge problem for especially smaller municipalities that may not have the kind of capital resources. In order to confront the costs to be able to. And the supply chain is changing because of pricing, right, yeah.
Most of the smaller private projects, now there was roughly seven on the road down here. Is that also the private projects that we're reporting, no?
No, we don't have, we don't report on those things.
I'd be happy to give you a update, you know, offline, cause I did check them all. Uh one was canceled, but the other ones are all done pretty much. Uh okay, moving right along, the um Crystal has suggested. If you did not have an in-house warrant last week, that we should probably reintroduce. And second, um last week's resolution, it should be two days, there were only seven. Okay, so let's get down to business, um. Firstly, the point of commissioner D, then introduction is second. Tersha, Rich.
Councilmember Belton. That's the Ludi. Moranti. Nisan. Morris. Fernegan. Roberts. Roni. Sar. Lola. President Pedro. Carrie.
There's a hand raised online, just a square.
Oh, sorry, I can't.
Yeah, you can't.
Did they wait till after the uh resolutions, or whatever it is? Public input.
Uh it's Ron Copniki, I I have a question or comments and questions about the D R I process.
Well, that wasn't really an agenda item, so.
Well, I it it, I'm sorry, it relates to the resolution you're going to vote on tonight, which has to do with the Shacks.
Right, okay, when we get to that, you can raise your questions.
Will it be before or after the council votes? Well, will I get, will I be able to say something before the council votes or after they vote? Yes, which before or? Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, supporting the mayor's state assembly to incentress a uh strong packaging reduction recycling infrastructure act. An introduction is secondly, Jennifer and Rich.
Councilmember Belton. That's the Ludi. Moranti. Nisan. Morris. Fernegan. Roberts. Roni. Sar. Lola. President Pedro.
The next is the resolution approving a sub-license between the Slit Club and the Hudson Ferry Company, introduction is secondly. Tersha, Rich. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton. That's the Ludi. Moranti. Nisan. Morris. Fernegan. Roberts. Roni. Sar. Lola. President Pedro. Carrie.
The next approves the sub-license agreement between the Slit Club and the Hudson Ferry Company, introduction is secondly, to on. And Tersha. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton. That's the Ludi. Moranti. Nisan. Morris. Fernegan. Roberts. Roni. Sar. Lola. President Pedro.
Uh the next resolution is, oh, Crystal, can you explain again, as you did last week? How the process works for changing the extending the tax law and?
Yeah, this is for the lodging tax, I just like, I was so small, I couldn't see it, um. Yeah, so what happens now is that this resolution is essentially authorizing a letter to be sent um to our. To the city's legislative representatives for a bill that would allow for us to increase from four percent to five. for a bill that would allow for us to increase from four percent to five percent. Once we have that bill, then we put in a home rule request, there's a form that has to get filled out, you're gonna have another resolution before you that's gonna get attached to that form, it's gonna have the bill number on it. And then that goes to the state to get that, um, legislation put in place that would allow for the tax to be increased.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Margaret?
Yeah, I have a question about it.
Yes.
So, um, Crystal, um, I'm a little confused here because what I've seen in other municipalities is that, um, they are, they request to increase their lodging tax and there have, you know, there seemed to have been quite a few approvals from the state, so what legislation is needed in order for that to happen? I, that, I'm a little confused by that.
The state has to pass legislation, so there has to be a legislative act by the state that allows for us to increase, so we already had that originally and we do this every, I, I can't remember how many years, but every couple of years we have to go in and put another home rule request, requesting it to be extended because there's a sunset provision in the state legislation. Um, that has it where we're at four percent, we are not allowed to increase it without the state passing legislation saying that we can increase it up to five percent. So that's, it's the state legislation that I'm talking about.
So, no, but the question I have is how is it that these other municipalities have been given approval by the state to increase their taxes to five percent?
They do the same thing that we do, they go to their state representatives and make a request for the bill to be put in, they have to put in through, go through a home rule request process and that's how they get the legislation.
So the bill you're talking about would be Hudson specific?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand.
Yeah, and if you look actually, if you look under the New York State tax law, there is a specific statute for Hudson for this.
Okay, so I had another, uh, question about this. Um, the, uh, in, in general, what, what I'm seeing when I look at this is that the state is approving these requests, that, that's happening. Um, in, in the event that, uh, this approval comes through, the way from going to the BEA meetings the last couple of years, um, in, increases in taxes and property taxes certainly, that whole process is part of BEA. And what comes to the council at the end of the day is the complete package for the budget. It's not a line item thing, we don't vote on it on a line item basis. And so in the event that we are given approval to increase the lodging tax from four to five percent, is that something that would then be handled through the BEA process? Or would the decision to increase the lodging tax come back to the council as a specific item for the council to vote? And then we have.
It, it's gonna be a local law that has to be passed, Margaret, so once we, once we get the state approval, then the council has to then go through a local law process.
Okay, so there's no way for that to happen without it coming back to the council, that, that was my, yeah, I, I'm not on the face of this very much in favor of the increase without some specific reason for the increase. Uh, and I think we would need to look very carefully at potential impact on, um, on the hospitality industry. Uh, and we'd need, I, I want to have a lot more mon, or more information before, um, saying yes, we should increase it, but my concern was that if this was just going to be folded into the BEA process, then we would not have any control.
Yeah. Okay, introduction in second place. Ron, I mean, Ron, go on. Okay, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton.
I need to abstain.
Dassaludi.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Volo.
Abstaining.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, moving on. Uh, checking youth center donation, can I have an introduction in second, go on, and?
Tersha.
Tersha, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Dassaludi.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
And then you have a, a, a private apartment, second donation from public sale auction house. Introduction in a second place. Jennifer and? Go on. Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Dassaludi.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
Okay, two resolutions. And we do introductions in seconds first and then we can discuss them. The first resolution is designating the register star as a city's official newspaper. Introduction, go on, second.
Yes.
Tersha, any questions? Do you have any choice? Excuse me?
Is it a choice?
There are really no, there's always rules about, you have to have one and there's always, always publication that publishes a certain amount of times and this is the only one that will, that has to be hard copy. So it tries to listen and not be yet.
Well, well, in, depends on the register star.
Yes.
That I have noticed, that the articles are free. Um, and, and in my case, there even audio, which is awesome.
Really?
You can click on play, yeah, you click on play and it read it, read it to you. I mean, you have to have a commercial, which is okay, but, but I think if.
So it's off.
It, well, yeah. Unless you buy with yourself, um, but, um, I appreciate that aspect of it because a lot of our, our, our individuals, uh, especially with some of the important stuff, um, have access now to some, some very valuable, um, information, so. I don't know if I just left the cat on the bag, but.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Dassaludi.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next, uh, resolution accepts a nicer grant for CAC. A budget amendment for a light bulb exchange and light if you want, can I have an introduction in second place, if you want? Tersha. Um, Rich, would you like to add anything to this?
Um, this is part of the, uh, nicer, um, New York State Clean Energy Communities. It's, uh, five thousand dollars and ten thousand dollars, uh, that we received for, um, the fact that there are going to start a number of heat pumps that are being installed throughout the city, both residential and commercial. And, um, there are certain amount of options that the Clean Energy Communities offers, one being, you know, they do, like other towns such as Akram have done light bulb exchanges and as well as, um, uh, electrical law equipment because the gas powered equipment, gas lawn mowers are like, you know, five or 10 cars, there's no catalytic converters, no filters, so nothing, um, so that, that definitely saves, um, greenhouse gases and, uh, it's, yes.
Um, is that a one-time thing for the heat pumps or if we identify more?
If there's more, yeah, it goes up, I don't know the schedule.
Because I'm just, I'm just walking down my street, there's like two.
Yes, well, they get a, I guess, uh, my, my service gets like a, something from code enforcement that says what has been installed. Um, similarly, there's other grants out there for X number of electric vehicles that the DMV sends to, I sort of, so there's more grants, it's all part of climate smart and, uh, basically the state will be giving funding as long as you fill out the forms.
Right, I see.
I didn't try two solar generators.
Same.
I had two solar generators that are awesome.
Oh.
They're, they're solar powered.
Okay.
Which is awesome, there's, the panels come with them and everything and, yeah, it's, it's awesome. And you're safe because you can actually run them inside your house.
Yes.
Almost, yes. Yeah, I'd like to say something about this, uh, resolution. Uh, although I'm all for the clean energy, I have to say that, um, uh, these rechargeable batteries, uh, they're using cobalt, which comes from Congo and, uh, it has caused an enormous deforestation and it also, uh, the conditions of the people there are totally, uh, inhumane. Uh, you'll see, um, mothers with their kids, uh, being exposed to toxic, um, there's toxicity in the waters. Uh, and I really think we are, um, supporting something that, uh, is killing another part of our planet. Uh, and, uh, I don't think it's okay the way people are, are mining the area and how they're killing other people, so.
Thank you. Any other guests?
Um, right, so the exchange for these long questions, is that something that people apply for? Or is it like you bring one in, you get another one?
For the, for the light bulbs, yes, for the light bulbs, yes, the lawn equipment is gonna end up probably up at the cemetery, which is like, like DPW, DPW buys lawn equipment to replace or as their other lawn equipment, it raises out. But the light bulbs are for people, the lawn equipment is gonna be for DPW.
But, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So what does it bring? Say.
When they have to, what is?
I mean, uh, what other towns have done is they'll do a, uh, incandescent light bulb exchange for LED light bulbs, for LED light bulb, um, but, I mean, if, if no one, it's, it's a very loose exchange, basically, we'll have to involve significant, um, to people, so, yeah.
How many are you getting?
I don't remember many, but.
Can I, can I send my special?
You can send me, yes, you can send me everything, yes.
Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Dassaludi.
Abstain.
Moranty.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Abstaining.
Brony.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution, uh, provides funding for the, um, science relating to the relocation of the Colesport's offices, guy, an introduction in a second place. Tersha and Margaret. Any questions? Roll call vote please.
Councilmember Belton.
Aye.
Dassaludi.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Nisan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sarr.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Carrie.
The next resolution is a DRI related resolution I referred to. It's a contact with such and cultural services to develop and implement a mitigation plan for the Fagari fishing village, this guy, an introduction in a second place, first. Margaret and go on. Councilmembers, questions?
How did this come, how, how did this come about that we're doing this? Can you give us some background?
I think, yeah, there was like, um, the DRI consultant, I think, put out the RFP and this was the only one that responded.
No, I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. Why did we have to, like, in reading this language where this, um, taking down the, the Shacks is a negative thing and though we have to have a mitigation and so on, did something occur, was it the demolition of the Shacks? That prompted the fact that we have to go through this mitigation process, but I'm saying.
No, yes, early on, a couple of years ago, it was identified that there's a lot of asbestos and all kinds of dangerous things down there, if that's what you're referring, I'm sure, I sure understand your question now.
Yeah, I don't know what the.
Mike, do you want to help me?
Sure, so, uh, we actually have previously, um, had Pleasant Cultural Services embark on an alternatives analysis for the state of the Fagari fishing villages at the request of SHPO. So SHPO had requested this actually a few years ago and it sort of fell off, but we got back on track and had this alternatives analysis completed, submitted it to SHPO with the, that basically outlined all of the possible steps that could be taken with Fagari, which included full demolition, it included restoring them, et cetera. After reviewing that alternatives analysis, SHPO came back to us with a letter saying that it effectively the, uh, only way fo, uh, like, the only way forward that would, um, be feasible and reasonable for, given the state of the Shacks currently, is for, is to embark in a demolition plan for the, for the Shacks. And with or without the preservation of, of one or review of them for the sake of this struggle.
And so was that a recent thing that came back from SHPO?
That was something I think, I, I think it's in the resolution actually, that it was a letter from, in March, that we received from them.
Yes.
Okay, so that's what, what I was trying to get at was, wh- what were the, what were the various steps that kind of prompted this activity now?
Yeah, we, we submitted the alternatives analysis to SHPO in, in September or January and then they have a review process that came back to us with this recommendation. And so we sought for, uh, the, the creation of a mitigation plan, which was their request. And as we have this proposal.
Okay, thank you.
What and who are the Hudson Cultural Services?
It's a consultant, um, that, I mean, I don't remember exactly where they're based, but they're, they specialize in, um, uh, historic preservation.
They're in Magrangelo.
Magrangelo.
Okay.
And will the eighty eight hundred will come out of the, um, general fund?
They will come out of the, uh, DRI.
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 Any other councilmembers? Ron, is this where you wanted to, uh?
Yeah, that's one.
Uh, yes, I, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, uh, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Fernhagen for bringing up the idea of, of updating projects that are in the pipeline, including the DRI projects. Uh, in the case of the Dunn Warehouse, there was a committee which met to evaluate responses to the request for proposals and then decided who would get to go ahead with the project. I'm not sure of the composition of that committee, although I know Ms. Morris was on it and I don't know its relationship to what used to be called the DRI Committee, which had been set up by Mayor Rector and then was continued by Mayor Johnson. I'd like to ask, first of all, with regard to the Shacks, I'd like to ask, first of all, with regard to the shacks, has there been, is there, or is there going to be any such committee dealing with the implementation of the DRI plan with respect to the shacks?
Michael, can you?
With respect to this specific project, no, I don't believe in some, in the plans to have a specific commi- committee for, for that.
So then, who, who within City Hall decided to approach Hudson Cultural Services?
It was a collaboration between the mayor's office and our administrators, La Bella, who were contracted to assist us with administration of the DRI award.
Okay, uh, i- in my opinion, any of these DRI procedures that are involved with implementing the ten million dollar grant, which was given to the city, uh, should be subject to the open meetings law and accessible, any such meetings which are involved with the making of these decisions should be open to the public. Uh, I'm noticing a disturbing pattern in which, forget about the public, the council itself is being involved and apprised of developments at a very late stage in the process. And I, I, I call upon the city to, you know, follow what I can consider to be the requirements of the open meetings law, which, which require that if the public business is being done, that meetings in which, at which it is being conducted be accessible to the public.
Can I speak?
Yes. Matt McGee would also like to speak, if possible.
Okay.
Yes, I just wanted to make a statement about the open meetings. Denying or abridging the people's basic right to know what government is doing as it occurs undermines confidence in government and fails to ensure the beneficent ends of its institutions. This is sorely lacking and the public, let alone the city council, should know what's happening as it is happening. Not after the fact, not when everything is basically wound up. Thank you.
Good morning, Ron. I have one more question.
Yes.
Is La Bella now taking the place of, was it Chazen or?
It's, it's the same company, they just became.
I, I have a question about that too.
Sure.
So, my understanding with these DRI projects is the state requires us to have.
Yes.
A consultant.
Yes.
And that we were getting reports from this consultant on, I think, a quarterly basis or something.
When there were DRI committee meetings.
Yeah, when you have the meeting, so, but we haven't had anything since, so hasn't been any information ever about two years. Uh, can something be done about that? Why are we not getting updated information from this consultant on the status of the project?
I mean, for, for one, it was stagnant due to.
Sorry, I'm sorry, can you speak up?
For one, it was stagnant due to COVID.
Right.
Now, we're at the part, like, we couldn't have open meetings, um, you know, for Dunn Warehouse, or we're going through, uh, proposals, so, you know, that couldn't happen. But for now, we're just pushing next steps, so there's nothing that's needed to be decided, um, but.
That's not what I'm asking, Mer.
I don't.
What I'm asking is, um, why can we not, now that there appears to be some activity going on, why can we not get standing reports from the consultant? They are required to report to the state on the status of the projects. And so why is that information not coming, sorry?
We have to be, there, there hasn't been much status, there has to be more status.
Yes, but now we, now we have something before us that we're voting on, Tom is telling us some, things are moving along. We have a mandated consultant.
And that's, it's gonna, it's not, it, like, it's not gonna happen in the future, but.
But even if we just had a report that said there was no activity this quarter.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's fine.
I mean, they're still invoicing us now, they're still, they're still invoicing now. It's still work, but there's no, there's no work being done.
Yeah.
That's one of the reasons why there are fewer reports, because we've got a lot of money that's kind of.
But, but they, they are, they are required to.
But that's going to the state, I mean, that's, that's.
Yeah, and, and then if they, if they're charging, then we can get a report out of them.
True.
But I, I do want to agree with Tom that it is a cost-conscious decision to not take so much of their time in meetings.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair.
So, but, but we have produced written reports and, like I said, we can give you what we.
But I guess, Michael, what I'm saying is the state requires them to provide an update to the state.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, why can't we get that up? That's all I'm saying.
There must be a project plan or we could just get a copy of or something.
Which I will, right.
Great.
You've got it.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to give you, um, a shout out, Tom, and compliment you, just because, just right now, the way this mi- meeting's going, we're getting good information and I really appreciate how you just handled that public. Uh, even though we don't have to take it now, um, you, you readdressed it and you brought the public into, into the, and I, I want to commend you on that.
So, thank you, Don, it's just that I understand a lot of confusion about DRI.
Sure, sure, but.
Just that you, we, the city was giving ten million dollars is incorrect, because we weren't getting all that money, we got part of that money.
Right.
And, you know, right, so it's important, I agree, to, to kind of let people know what's happening about it.
But you've taken criticism in the past and I just want to commend you on this meeting.
Okay, you say as much as you want.
Never you buying me up.
About this new town.
To do a better job. The payments to the consultants, part of the DRI grant actually, because the state requires you to have the consultant, part of that is actually earmarked for the consultancy fee, so it is part of the grant.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not like, you know, that's what it's for and you're not gonna get it if it's not spent on that.
In the early meetings with, when it was still chasing, we found their meetings were like, just a lot of it was unnecessary. A lot, and it was, you know, in fact, it was sucking money from project grants, the next one would be something, yeah. Do we have any hands up, by the way, do we, do we take questions?
Yeah, I don't see any, are you talking on my?
Okay, you're back, and I got.
I think Tom, uh, Ronald probably just had him taking his hand down, but, no, don't.
You'll go home, please.
Councilmember Belton. Aye. Dastaludi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Nisan.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Hi.
Saur.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presley Pedro.
Hi.
Harry. Sure.
Uh, the next resolution authorizes Mary to execute the license agreement with the Swim Club to develop, operate and maintain the Herbert Max Act through our education center. Um, included no money involved in this, it's just permission to, uh, bring their vehicle down, excuse me, the Max and which is a mobile, um, unit. Kind of introduction in a second, please. Jennifer. Dawn. Questions?
I have questions, so I don't understand what exactly are gonna be these educational opportunities and this outdoor recreation, it's not.
Have you ever landed, what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
You s- you've seen it, that, 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 uh, big, I don't know.
It's a trailer.
Trail. And they just have various events, you know, where they get kids in to show them respect and the rhetoric and all that kind of stuff.
So it's similar, or is this?
Yeah, it's the same thing.
Same, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
And it's pre-programmed, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
Yes.
Pretty, um, you just show up.
So basically, we, we're just lending them rent for a dollar for five years, committing for five years.
Yes.
This was an agreement that was, we previously had with them, but it's since expired, so.
Right, it's really.
Just a little.
Remember. Any else? Okay, let's go.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Dastaludi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
N- Nisan.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Saur.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Harry.
Uh, let's see, the next two are from Rob, you mentioned them last week. One is authorizing lunch and dinner fund to the Capitol Center. Orders targeting lead service line inventory project funded by drinking water state for a housing fund. An introduction in a second, please. Margaret? Someone? Tersha? Questions? Hold on, hold on, please.
Councilmember Belton, aye. Dastaludi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Nisan.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Fern- Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Saur.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presley Pedro.
Hi.
Harry.
The next resolution authorizes a memorandum of understanding of the Sylvia Senator for Youth Department Program.
No, we just fixed the one. The next one is, uh.
Right, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Um, it's the, uh, lunch and dinner fund to the Union Street Sewer Main Project. An introduction, Margaret, Anne? Rich, yeah.
No, I, I have a comment on this one, I, I don't know, Rob is not here, I know I've talked to him about this. So he, and he, we have discussed this, he puts in here that the sewer was put in in eighteen ninety-five and that the houses were built sometime after nineteen hundred. Now, I do not believe that the sewer runs under my house, but I have deeds from my house back into the eighteen nineties. And the first one that I have is a transfer from, uh, I believe the original resident to a member of his family, so he, that was in ninety-seven. He was already living there in ninety-seven, and to my knowledge, it was built by nineteen, in eighteen ninety-five, at the very latest, probably earlier. It's not a trivial issue, because one of the, um, one of the statements that has been made, and I, and again, this does not run under my house, so I'm not impacted by this, I don't know when the house is further down Union or built, I know the three, the first three were built at the same time. But one of the cases that the city has made is that the houses were put up after the sewer was put in, therefore, it's not the student's problem. Now, I'm glad to see this is being addressed, but I am not sure that that after nineteen hundred statement is correct for the houses in question. And I think that we should get that right. There's a statement here that says the sewer was put in in eighteen ninety-five, uh, and that, um, the, the houses were constructed on top of the main in the early mountain house. I'm not sure if that's enough of a statement, it's certainly not full of my notes, but again, I don't think the sewer runs under it. And I have deeds that show me that, no.
Um.
But I think, I think we either need to strike that or get it right.
Okay, just whatever.
Yeah, so, but as I said, eighteen ninety-five has been doing damage to houses, um.
We can just say like subsequent constructive, yeah.
But they were not.
Oh.
My house was not, my house was built before that sewer. So that, that, and the reason it's kind of important is that the case that has been made to some of these constituents is that it's their problem, because the house was built over the sewer.
Ah, I see.
And that's not necessarily true. And so I'm, I've been trying to chase down the original deed from, uh, and I happen to have these deeds just because a previous owner of the house showed up, who was an historian, and he had every deed going back to the ni- the eighteen nineties. And he said, you should have these, because they belong to the house. So.
So, how about an amendment? How was it changed, so?
Um.
We just.
Uh, we could just say, uh, stone sewer construction, it was constructed in eighteen ninety-five, has experienced damage that results in seepage during heavy rain events in the area, um, into, um, uh, houses on Union Street.
Yeah, yeah.
And leave it at that, because, y- you know, without researching and really determining, but, and I don't, the houses are further down and I'm not sure, I don't know when they.
So, leverage.
Just like that.
Pick up the early nineteen hundred.
Yeah.
Right, I'm, so it's gonna be, where is the stone sewer, built by the city of Hudson in eighteen ninety-five, has experienced damage that results in seepage during heavy rain events on Union Street.
Except that part.
Yep, and cut out the rest and then.
Yeah, the rest is fine, yeah.
Can I have a?
Wait, wait, hold on, is this the Mr. Jack Dylan project?
Sorry?
Yes, this is Jack Dylan.
Yeah.
No, it's not just Jack. There are quite a few houses.
Got it.
Okay, so maybe, a motion to amend it, as I just said.
Motion.
Margaret?
Second.
Dominic, all those friends, you guys listening, you're high?
Hi.
Well, I think we can go back to the.
Question about this, uh, like, the original statement.
Yes.
The wording, who was, um, who proposed it?
Rob.
And should we not get his input?
Yeah, I know.
Whether this changes.
No, I think it's gonna affect it one day.
Okay.
And if it does, I'm sure I'll be about it more, yeah.
I think he's just trying to give it history background.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is not affecting.
Right.
What, what we're trying to move.
So this is a hundred thousand that's the initial action, which is survey and all this, and then we have to pay another, for the new sewer main, how much is that gonna be about?
We'll find out after this.
So, and that is something we pay, there's no way to get any help. So, it can be, it can be wrong, huh? Well, this, this has gone. No, I mean, yeah. What were you saying, Mer?
I thought maybe there would be some grants available.
Yeah, I'm sure you, I'm sure Rob was looking at that.
This is the timing to do.
Yeah, so, we need a new introduction in a second, please. Done?
Oh, yes.
Okay, remember the three, let's have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Belton, you buy. Dastaludi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Nisan.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts. Roney.
Aye.
Saur.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presley Pedro.
Hi.
So the next is the memorandum of understanding, this is also written with youth park program, there is no money involved. I believe it, it's mainly, um, common and nutrition information that they provide to the kid. Kind of introduction in a second, please. Dawn, Margaret. Questions?
When you say there's no money involved, we do have to pay, we do have to pay that T S P program, not us, I think the youth department.
No, it's, they, it, I think, we don't.
No, the nine thousand seven fifty is what?
Yeah, no, they, they break themselves.
Huh?
It's, it's free across the city.
It's just always for them to pay the cost, that's probably what they're paying for something.
Right, I'm gonna have to, oh.
Okay, well, well, then.
Lifeless.
Councilmember Belton.
Here's the money.
Dastaludi.
Hi.
Moranti.
Hi.
Nisan.
Hi.
Morris.
Hi.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Hi.
Roney.
Hi.
Saur.
Hi.
Volo.
Hi.
Presley Pedro.
Hi.
Harry.
Well, the next, um, resolution authorizes a sewer system, sewer system improvements with an estimated cost of one point five million dollars and an issuance of serial bonds, and introduction in a second, please.
Okay.
Rich? And Dawn.
Can we get some background on this?
Uh, oh, I thought you weren't here last, um.
No.
Last, uh, Monday, um, this is from Rob Altam, and this is the main, uh.
Can you, can you pull that up, Martin?
Um, I'm having a second.
Oh, okay, I, I let me just go. I can open it up.
The meeting is still going, I saw.
Oh, okay, I thought it was rejected, I thought, oh, they're still there, they're there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, we've been here, we've been talking about that for a while.
It's one of these, he has a monkey face thing, what he do, is this one of those? That's not possible.
Uh, can I, can I contribute to this, please? This is Heather.
Yeah, I, I can't send the name, so.
I forgot you were there, thanks, that would be helpful.
I'm so forgettable, I'm so sorry. No, I'm kidding, so, um, the resolutions are not updating on the website, so I believe I heard we're talking about the one point five million bond resolution, correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, so this is a combination of two things, and, uh, the first thing I will say is that the timing is important, because we are going to have to refinance our outstanding bands, which are one-year, you know, financial obligations, and that happens basically, this year it's gonna happen, I believe, on June twenty-first. Um, because there are significant timing components, so when you do a bond resolution, you guys approve it, but then there's other things that have to happen, and one thing is in a stopple period, which is basically, we have to be able to publish it and there has to be X amount of time for people to recognize it and, and comment and say they don't like it or whatever. Um, so, that's why this is showing up this month. We tried to give it another month to do it in May, but the timing was just too tight. So, basically, the reason why we're presenting this now is because we would like to tie this additional potential financing into, um, the bond and ban refinancing that's going to happen in June of, uh, this year. So having said that, um, this is for two new additional things, um, that have not been on the financing field before. The first thing is actually what you just discussed, um, which is the Union Street Sewer Main replacement.
Heather, we lost you like six minutes ago in the chamber, I just wanted to log in. Essentially, after your joke, we didn't hear anything.
Oh, all right.
No, it was a date, June, you said a date of June, and then we didn't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now or no?
Yes, but I don't think we can continue the meeting until, um, Michael gets the system back up, because otherwise it's not going to be recorded.
Gotcha, okay, so I will tell jokes and, and make funny faces. Though a man walks into a bar.
Ouch.
He gets drunk and leaves, not a good joke.
Send them a walkthrough. We should have a walkthrough of the whole thing, she started the.
Is it Michael?
We're back, but for some reason, it's not, but, so.
But, Tom, isn't it still to the chair to, you know, to, they can stay, because ZBA doesn't use it, right? So, they can still be impersonal.
Sure, can I tell you what I want?
Yeah.
It's an obligation, if you have or, or anything, but, you know, we want, we like it that way.
No, I get you, yeah.
Are you trying to get, like, people paid?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
I think, I think there will be more than enough interest.
I hope so, I've actually approached the audiovisual department of the high school.
Yeah.
I'd like to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's next. It's really, it's hard question to find somebody reliable.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people could probably do this.
But not.
But not a lot will show up all the time, that's the most frustrating thing. Okay, you got Michael, you go ahead.
Uh, the meeting is back, we.
Okay, Heather. Yeah, back on.
Okay, so basically, what this resolution does is identify two new additional forces, uh, sources of funding that we're going to need. Uh, I'm not sure how much you heard before, but, um, we have a ban, which is a bond anticipation note, which renews, and it's gonna be renewing at the mid of June of this year. So the idea is to get this additional potential borrowing in, because some of that ban is gonna be, uh, refinanced as a bond, which is a long-term permanent financing. And some of it will continue to be the short-term financing, the short-term financing is largely related to the D R I, because the delay in the time that we get the reimbursements, um, and the size of the reimbursements are so large that we can't just cover that with our, you know, the money that we have in-house. So, the two things that are included in this bond resolution are, one, the project that you all just talked about, which is the replacement of the, uh, Union Street Sewer. Um, and the second one is, um, the requirement, um, it's, it's called a bar screen. It's basically a very expensive piece of screening equipment that is involved in the processing of sewage, in the sewage plant. Um, and that needs to be replaced. Um, Rob's rough estimates for that are, um, anywhere from a half a million to seven hundred and fifty thousand for the bar screen. And he's anticipating the Union Street replacement will be roughly six or seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, we gave ourselves a little cushion, uh, as I said before, I'm not sure what you heard, um. It would have been, in, in some ways, it would have been, uh, nicer to have been able to wait until the next council meeting to present this, because we would have had tighter costs. But at the same time, we are going to be going out to refinancing in mid-June. The requirements that we have, once a bond resolution is passed, it's called estoppel, you have to do a public notice, it has to have X amount of time. Um, the May timeline of the council meeting was too tight. And, um, it is far more financially efficient to do all of our borrowing in one phase. Uh, because there are, it's a thing called cost of issuance, so you have to pay the lawyers, you have to pay the financial events, you have to pay like the Moody's rating. We don't wanna have to replicate those costs again, just to move a small amount of borrowing out a month or two. So, that is what this is about. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? For council? Or anybody else? Okay. We're all open.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. That's the Ludy.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Harry.
And our last resolution is, um, about the allocations for the tourism event awards, can I do an introduction in a second, please? Rich and Tricia. As you know, last night's finance committee went through a little list. Um, any questions? Dominic.
Um, I want to thank the finance committee, I think they did a great job last night going through it, it was very, um, organized, and I think they did a great job how they processed that, so anyway, I wanna give them a prop on that. I know it's very difficult, I absolutely, you know, you, you want that extra, but it, you know, you guys did a great job in your, in your processing.
Thanks.
Forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, and thank you, Dominic, for pointing out that, yes, all events must be ADA compliant as well. Um, so that's such that we had to, that we overlooked, but thank you for catching that, you're doing, um, yes, anyone? Okay, that's one.
Councilmember Bellton, aye. That's the Ludy.
Aye.
Moranty.
Aye.
Isan.
Aye.
Morris.
Aye.
Fernhagen.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Brony.
Aye.
Sauer.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presley Pedro.
Aye.
Harry.
So I was, I've been thinking, uh, Jennifer said about surgery and its future. And, um, I think it's a great idea, if you think of possibly a friends group or something to do that. Because there's no money really doing much with it. And, uh, there's no reason why, you know, people can't, uh, volunteer if they want, you know, I mean, we've, we're pretty lucky with groups supporting parks, and that could be one of our bad parts, if, you know, somebody wants to get it together, I don't know if it's actually a council meeting, but, you know, you'd probably come to the council with a memo of understanding, like we do with the other parks, and then go to work.
So if that were to happen.
Yes, right.
Let's say there's like similar to the pops of, of the Palm Square. If that was to happen, we would have to, that would have to happen before obviously they demolish the buildings or.
I mean, I don't think there's any question about the general demolition.
Oh.
At this point.
Could the materials be saved?
It depends on the shaft, because some of them are, have, uh, sensitive materials that we would not be able to save, but some of them might.
Because if we could save the materials, that would, I think that would mean a lot, you know?
Yeah.
And, and it would go to the historical nature of everything, so saving them and reusing them might be.
So, one thing that we can do first is actually any council members that are interested, we can put you in touch with Pleasant Cultural Services now that we've entered this agreement, to provide feedback, information, thoughts about the mitigation plan.
Okay.
Which will, which can address exactly what you're considering.
Well.
I think, um, as someone who may or may not have hung out there in, in his younger day, I think the thing is that it, the ones that really care, there's, there's, you know, there's, there's some negativity, and if we can turn that into positive, something that's created with their involvement, whatever it is, you, you know, I think, uh, you know, the energy needs to be focused on bringing it back to, for a reason, and, and keeping some of that, whatever can be salvaged for history, whether it's, you know, some kind of statute, whatever it is. But I think, to me, I think it would be great to have a couple of, you know, lean to's, things like that, and, and park, you know, for, you know, for that kind of experience, because it is a great location.
One of the ideas would also have, you know, some kind of signage. You know, the way that you have parks on parks, you know, where you can read about it, and maybe pictures.
I would love an artist, I said, there's so many pictures, I would love an artist that could do a nice mural, right, of what it looked like on the river, right? It, it, and when I used to dig Amtrak, it was like, wow, it was just like incredible to, to see what it looked like, right?
Before, we did some more new business. Uh, I wanna remind you all that the mailbox is here now, you should check them, I'd say, oh, you're looking at them, good, good. Uh, Margaret, would like to, uh, present some information and, well.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure, uh, we, at the last top committee meeting, we didn't have a forum, so we couldn't really have the meeting. Um, I had two documents, one is a summary from Jason Foster, the commissioner of, uh, Public Works, and the other is a proposal from a company. So when we met with D O T, um, to, to get clarification on, on the information that they had given us, one of the things that they discussed was assessing what weight our roads can actually tolerate. And there are a couple of approaches to doing that. One of which is, um, you know, you drill into the road to look at the actual, uh, the, the sub layers and so forth. And the other is, um, a system that uses a falling weight, um, deflectometer. And so, they don't have to do, it's not as disruptive, I think it's like a total of eight hours would cover the whole city. So, uh, Jason had reached out to a couple of companies, and only one company had this particular equipment, which would be the preferred method. Um, the company itself is mostly based in Texas, but they happen to be doing work in the northeast right now. So we were trying to get it to the committee last, the last one, so that we could bring it to the council to, to discuss. Um, the advantage to doing this is that it will give us information that we can take to D O T to support the statement that we cannot have the fifty-three foot trucks on any of our streets.
Right.
Because they are not equipped to support it.
Yeah.
And it would also, um, you know, underline the fact that the CHIPS money that we get, we can only redo a portion of road every ten years with, using the CHIPS money, whereas we are actually repaving sections of, of third, more often than not, just because of the damage. So, um, the, I don't know, Tom, whether it would, is possible for us to move forward on this. Dee Barrett, the grant that she gave us, or whatever, we still have over forty thousand in that. She said we could use it, but it's completely in line with the intent of that grant. So we have her approval, we have the money, and we would like to talk to this company before they move out of them.
How about, um, the council?
How much is the cost?
Uh, it's forty, I think it's forty-two thousand.
Thirty-two, is there more?
Sorry?
The invoice here is showing thirty-two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Is this the same thing?
No, I'm talking about the money from, uh, from Heather.
Oh, I see, I see.
Hang on, let me, let me look at my document again, hang on.
So, Margaret.
Let me just pull this up. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, the, the forty-two, the forty-two.
Forty-two is how much we have left?
That's what, we have at least forty-two, yeah.
Get a resolution and have this to our special meeting next week.
Perfect, I'll do a resolution, okay? Great, thank you.
Tom, you're.
That's it.
I need to keep it up.
Oh, Heather.
Another joke?
Uh, just one comment or, or question, and this is not my area of expertise, but, um, I know Margaret and I have talked about the fact that there was money left over from the study, and whether it could be repurposed, and I understand that she's reached out to Dee Barrett's office and have gotten that confirmation. I touched base with Rob literally like an hour or two ago about this, because I saw the resolution about the study. And, uh, his comment was that although it is a, I forget what they call it, but you know, it's a member item from Dee Dee, ultimately, the funding is coming from D O T. And D O T has to be the entity that approves the redirection of these funds for that study. So I don't know if that, it sounds like you've been talking to D, D O T, I don't know if that's been documented, I don't know if we have anything, but I would just encourage, um.
I, I can get a letter from Dee Dee, wh- when we, when Jason and I met with her, and Jason also reported back to me that when he had met with Rob, and Rob's take on it was that, you know, he was not against doing the study, and his, his thought was, if you don't use this money, it goes away, basically.
Yeah.
Dee Dee did not see this as redirecting of money, she saw this as consistent with the intent of the grant, it was to assess the impact of the trucks on the streets.
Right, understood, but all I'm saying is that my interpretation of what I've been told is that Dee Dee can say that, but you need something from Department of Transportation, because it's originally the funding from that organization that says, yes, we originally identified this amount of money for X, now you can use the balance of it for Y.
Okay, I will, I will look into that, Heather, thank you.
Okay, cool.
Again, but Dee Dee's take on it was, this isn't X and Y, X and X.
Like, a- and again, I'm also not the expert in this, but I just know how these things work and, you know.
Thank you.
People can be territorial about their money.
Thank you, thank you, Heather. So, Heather, do you process?
I have one, uh, at the finance department, uh, meeting, we discussed about, uh, getting, uh, hiring a part-time, um, grants commu-, uh, coordinator.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we should move with, uh, forward with this, especially now that Michael is gonna be leaving. Somebody that can do like forty hours a month or something.
Well, we talked about it, you know, mayor's office, I think it was a thing, uh,
Yeah, just.
You know, the P D G A.
Don't we have someone who can help writing our grants, or is it?
We have grant.
We have grant, either, but not coordinator, because there are so many, and this is like all the money, this is for.
It relates a lot to the work that Heather does, actually. But she has to keep track of the finances on those grants.
Was it Samina?
Didn't Sheena last year? Sheena had a very unique role in the city.
Who?
Sheena Salmina.
Yeah.
She was the executive director of both H D C and N C D P A.
Mm-hmm.
And her job was financed by the grants that either those two agencies got. Her office would administer them, and not all grants come with administrative fees, but some do, now help pay her sal- salary, but she was also salaried from those two agencies. So the three revenue sources were her pay.
Right, so similarly, if these grants come with administrator fees, that can help offset the cost of.
That's what I would think, but, uh, not a good grant comes with it, I should, that's what I learned, I was like.
But just if I can add, just to put it in perspective, when I got here, um, I think we had two grants outstanding, and I think we now have north of thirty. So it's become a real administrative burden, especially when you've got different, um, we don't have any centralized grant management, so Rob Perry gets, you know, operating grants from Department of Transportation and W I A and W Q I P, and then the youth department gets grants, and then C A C gets grants. And nobody's centralizing them, nobody's managing them, you know, certain people, you know, depending on your perspective, it's like if you apply for the grant and you finish the project and you submit your request for payment, you're done, but from my perspective, that's clearly not the end, that's barely the beginning. And I know earlier when we were talking about the D R I, somebody mentioned, uh, how late the, uh, reimbursements would be. We were carrying a grant reimbursement for over a year and a half from the time that the grant reimbursement was submitted to the time that we got the money, it was over a year and a half, and it crossed three fiscal years. And that is incredibly complicated to deal with from an accounting standpoint, so. Yeah, I mean, I am in very much support of figuring out how we can make this a better organized, from the administrative standpoint, uh, process.
Yeah, so that's exactly what we need, uh, to be organized, we want to be deadlines, and make sure we collect the, you know, the grant.
How many hours are you talking?
Forty-four months.
Flex, is it flexible?
I haven't talked anything, yeah.
Yeah, no.
Do we know anyone that could be flexible that has experience?
Do you, you have a pick?
Little check, twenty, towards the one over there. Who, who would this person report to, which office, would it be the mayor's office, or the?
Uh, I think Heather, uh.
Well, mayor's office, yeah.
I would think, I would think the mayor's office. Not mine.
Yeah, I mean, Michael often's been amazing with C A C grants.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I think the other thing to recognize here is that we work for a municipality that not only has unions, and part-time is not necessarily issue with unions, but we do have civil service, which means there's gonna have to be, even for part-time jobs, there's gonna have to be a job description created and all of that stuff. So, it's not just as easy as like contacting your neighbor that you know, hey, they've got experience in managing grants and giving them a job. One of the big downfalls of, you know, municipal government, it's slow.
It would be easier if we were to expand into another mayor role, aid role, that could take on more than just this, that way it would be easier to create this job description rather than create a whole new goal specifically to this.
Having a few administrative assistants to the mayor.
Yeah, and then their hours could be divvied up.
Yeah, the mayor, because the administrative assistant is not a C S E A determined job.
Yeah.
That's clear to your point. Rich, do you want to?
No, that's, uh.
No, you can go ahead, but like, I mean.
No, yeah, he really, please don't.
We don't. We're gonna miss him.
Yes, we are, Michael.
Anything else? Anyone?
No.
Can I, can I make one suggestion?
The media.
Uh, yeah, can I make a motion, Janitor?
Yes, yes, oh, wait, make that one, sir.
I just got a quick question, is there any update about the, uh, change of the parking meters? I'm getting a lot of questions for the parking.
No, we're gonna have our next meeting on the twenty-third.
Tuesday.
Rather than two presentations, um, oh, we can talk about, you know, there's no definite answer.
We wanna do our due diligence, so we're getting the best.
Yeah, but just get ready, because when we, when we add parking fees to the entire street, it'll be getting a lot of calls.
Man, propose a Google number, then I never get to answer it.
People are tired of what?
Living reporters.
Yeah.